Okay. All right, Scott.
Okay, well, turn it over. It being a little past six, I'll call to the the May 27th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board at Wickham Hall. And begin with the roll call. Glenn Page will not be here this evening. Scott Self here. Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson. Jane, you're muted. Jane Johnson, are you here?
I am here.
Richard Sandsberry.
Here.
Brandon Self. And Selectmen's Rep Sly Karasinski.
Here.
And Alternate Richard Lane.
Here.
And Alternate Steve Malone. He is not in attendance. Okay, I will seek to Richard Lane for Glenn Page. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Matthew to read the COVID.
Just before you begin, Matthew, could you just identify if anyone besides Scott and Richard are physically present at Wickham Hall?
Brandon Self is here and Sly Karasinski.
Thank you very much.
And Deborah Davis is here as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, member of the public. And so due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020, the Swansea Planning Board will be holding its meeting remotely using the web-based program. Board members and applicants will be participating in the meeting remotely as well as at Wickham Hall. The public may access the meeting online by going to www.zoom.us using the Zoom app or calling 992056099 and entering meeting ID 87388557651. If you have any difficulty over the course of the meeting, please call 6033527411 extension 108 or email mbaughler@swanzenh.co. More information on public access to the meeting was made available on the website. If the public is unable to access the meeting, a meeting will need to be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done using a roll call. So with that, I'll turn back to Scott.
Okay, the agenda for this evening is we have a continued public hearing from our meeting of May 13th. And that is Avenue Development Corporation requests a site plan review for an 84-unit multifamily residential development on properties situated off West Swansea Road and shown at Tax Map 72 Lot 98. The subject property is located in the Business District. And let's see, that's all for applications. We have discussions and other business. A discussion about code enforcement discussion, business and commercial zoning district discussions, and any other business that may be required. So we will review the minutes from May 13th. Has anyone got any additions, deletions, or comments on the minutes from May 13th?
Make the motion. They accept the minutes.
Hearing none, Richard makes a motion to accept the minutes as presented. We need a second.
Second.
Oh, second.
Second by Sly, he beat you to it.
Okay.
All in favor, Scott Self, yes. Michael York.
Yes.
Jane Johnson.
Yes.
Richard Sandsberry.
Yes.
Brandon Self.
Yes.
Sly Karasinski. Karasinski. Richard Lane.
Yes.
And it is passed. Okay, now we need a regional impact on tonight's meeting, although there's nothing different on tonight's meeting at all. We probably don't even need that regional impact because we already did a regional impact on it several meetings ago. So we'll skip that part of it. Let's see, so we'll go directly to our continued public hearing. So it looks like they presented a set of drawings for a different roof line, one or two. Were there two sets, Matthew? I saw two sets in my packet that I had on the computer, but.
Yeah, so I'll just sharing my screen here, just showing the architectural drawings that were provided by the applicant. So just to, and those are included in your packet as well. Just to take a step back, so just to review the last meeting, the planning board meeting on May 13th. We opened the public hearing for this application. And it was continued to the meeting this evening. The planning board asked the applicant to work on a couple of items and come back to this meeting on May 27th. The first of those, we're beginning to discuss alternative design options for the building roofs. So the board requested the applicant look into an alternative design that would have a more noticeable pitch for the groups than what was proposed. Two other items that were requested at the end of that meeting address how fire suppression would be provided on-site during construction. So this is referring to NFPA 241. A letter was provided by the architect on the project, Timothy Sampson, noting that that would be addressed during the building permit process for the project. That letter was provided to our fire department, to Chief Eric or Assistant Chief Eric Patten, who is the fire inspector, and he was comfortable with that, having it addressed as part of the building permit application. And then a third item that was discussed at that meeting, I brought up and mentioned to the board that I had had some discussions with DOT just about pedestrian crossing options on Route 10 in that area, the Kerry Lane intersection. You know, it's an area of town where we have residential properties on both sides of Route 10. Route 10 is a busy roadway. You know, we worked with DOT in a lot of different cases around town, trying to look at pedestrian improvements. So I had an initial correspondence with them if there would be an opportunity to put some type of pedestrian crossing there because it is an uncontrolled intersection right now. There's not, not a stoplight in place. So I did receive an email back from the DOT this afternoon. I'm going to just put it up in my screen. Prelimarily, DOT said they could issue a crosswalk agreement with the town for the location of certain improvements. And, you know, if the town would want to move forward with that, it would require an agreement with DOT. They would require street lighting, signs, probably a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is similar to what you would see. They put one of these up for the Newham School District between Mount Caesar 103 and the high school, middle school property. And they estimated that would probably cost the town $40,000 to $50,000 to put that in. So, you know, if it's something the town wanted to pursue in the future, they would be working with DOT, both the state office and the local office here on Bay Silver Room, just on the, you know, the design for that project. So it is a possibility at this point. So that's a summary of the three items that were discussed at the end of our last meeting. And to go over those. Scott, you were mentioning the architectural plans. So so on this screen, I'm showing the images on the lower half of the screen. This is what was proposed and reviewed at the last meeting. And then the images on the top half of the screen are an alternate design with a low slope roof for the building.
Maybe mismarked, but I think the gable ones might, well, in my picture here, you know, it shows, it says low slope roof. And it looks like it's underneath that one, but actually that's a low slope roof and that's a gable roof.
Oh, sure.
Just, just to clarify that, I'm sure people know about that.
I think that's, I think that's great.
But I think it's a big improvement, you know, what they submitted to us here as far as the gable roof goes, roof structure. It adds a lot to it in keeping with that surrounding area, especially with the apartment houses across the street, which, you know, their uses are the same, obviously. Anyone else want to chime in on that? Because that's mainly, you know, the thing that, that is left to discuss. The fire protection has been discussed, fire protection for onsite building, that is. And also, we've discussed the safety issue of pedestrian crossing Route 10. So the last one to discuss, the thing that we asked them for was the roof line.
I don't know if you want any comments from the applicant at this point or?
Oh, well, yeah, I just want to see what the board says about it, and then definitely we'll get the applicant talking about it. But it doesn't sound like the board has anything.
I think it's better, Scott, yes. It's better than the flat-looking roof.
Okay, I agree, Jane. Thank you. With the applicant, then I'd like to chime in on that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So I sent along an email to Matthew, which I, I hope he was able to, everybody had an opportunity to, to take a, take a look at. And the photos that are up right now, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are two different, two different from the original application. One, the one on top with the pitched roof, I think it's a five-to-one or slope or so thereabout. And then the one below, which actually has raised areas along the, the roof line. And Tim, can you weigh in on the height difference there that we have there for that slightly pitched roof on the bottom? What the difference offset is there? Tim Sampson, are you there? Oh, and also, Matthew, if you wouldn't mind making Tom Duffield a part of this discussion as a panelist, that would be great. And forgive me, I didn't introduce myself for the record. Jack Franks, Avenue Development Group here. With me this evening, I have Tim Sampson, Architect of Record, Thomas Duffield, Civil Engineer of Record. And I have counsel with me this evening, JP Harris, and Sheehan Finney-Bass and Green to go over this development. So, Tim, can you weigh in on the height, I guess, of the, of each of these two drawings? Because they are different, both are different from the original application, correct?
They are both different. The ones on the bottom, which are mislabeled, as someone noted. Those higher roofs are about 30 inches higher than the low roof. And then the gable roof, it's actually a strange pitch, but what I did just to sort of graphically depict what it was, we took the height of the building and set that peak right at about 45 feet, given the preliminary grades that we had. So it worked out to about a five-and-a-half pitch or something. It came out a little bit strange, but it was sort of the quickest down-and-dirty way to illustrate to the board that the difference, that the gable roof. And then, you know, if we just took sections of that low slope roof and bumped it up to see which one they might find acceptable.
Thanks, Tim, for clarifying that. So you do have two different drawings here that are different from the original application that was put in. And I'd like to kind of go through that a little bit. The email that I sent that was shared as part of the package, number two, that was sent to Matthew Baughler, that he shared. I cited, and I'd like to just put on the record, I cited in that email. And I'd like to read into the record, citing the 514 email I sent to you. Remodeled our 84-unit development after Asher LLC market rate development that recently was approved in one meeting in October of 2020. We felt that lowering the overall height of the facility as they were at 50 feet and splitting the much larger Asher LLC facility into two smaller buildings would result in a more aesthetically pleasing development. And although these developments are both multifamily, our proposal is workforce housing. So to clarify what workforce housing is, folks, this is a public and private partnership to develop this property. And as I read on here, workforce housing opposed to the market rates of Asher. The request for additional scope of work requested by the planning board. The pitched roof line is also attached. And as you can see, the cost increases nearly a million dollars. And although we do realize that these are both in different areas of Swansea, they're both located within the business commercial zone on a major highway. We maintain that the architectural layout that we presented originally meets all the required planning board and thresholds and standards or criteria. And unlike the Asher project, which was approved in one meeting, we did not request a height variance. We submitted stamped drawings by a licensed architect opposed to plans that were done by somebody who drew them up without stamps. We provide an ample detail on the site plan review, supporting documentation, parking reduction request, letters from DOT, letters from the State Housing Agency, and appraisal with multiple engineering reports supporting the proposed development. We don't have unlimited funds. And quite frankly, I think the project that we had originally submitted, in our opinion, was a, was a beautiful, a beautiful location for that particular building. I took some time and drove down, drove down there and I took a look at some of the surrounding businesses and you know, we're going to put up a brand-new building. And it's going to be a slight, you know, what we had originally proposed is a slightly pitched roof. You know, that drains back into itself, as we've previously discussed. But you know, this is a brand-new facility that's next to turmoil and next to Gemarlos. And as you could see by the photos of the surrounding businesses that I, that I sent in, you know, this is, this is definitely going to be an added plus. And I think that asking us to add $944,000 or thereabouts to a development project that really revolves around personal preference is, is, is more than we should be asked to do. Even the second one that Tim pointed out with the 30-inch difference is going to cost in excess of $150,000. So we've presented a well-thought-out plan. And we've given you some alternatives as you'd requested. But I would ask the board to approve the original plan or the one that's on the bottom because it's going to be an extreme hardship to add a million dollars to this so that we have, you know, a pitched roof. So that's, that's kind of my position on this. And I'd also like to point out that we spent a lot of time engineering this as a sealed unit facility with our thermal envelope. And this would certainly affect those thermal envelope calculations. And what we're trying to do here is to improve from where we were to where we hope to go and add better efficiencies from a thermal standpoint and carbon footprint. And have Swansea actually now hold the torch as the number-one energy-efficient building in the state rather than Walpole where we are currently. So we've put a lot of time, effort, and energy into this. And I understand that, you know, there's some personal preferences here with regard to the pitched roof. But if you look through the photographs of the area businesses that are all within a mile, there is a flat roof storage facility down the street. We've got a pizza place down the street. We didn't go as far as Market Basket, but you know, that's a commercial enterprise as well, and that's got a flat roof. And there was one photo that I sent that shows basically our field that we're proposing the development in with trees behind it on the other side of Route 10. And that tree buffered zone area is Princeton Properties. So although they may have, you know, a pitched roof that's flat on top at 45 or 46 feet, I think it's a little higher, it's almost 47 feet with the couplis, you can't see them. So from an aesthetically pleasing standpoint, I guess, from driving by, you don't even know that they're there. We don't have unlimited funds. And I'd really appreciate the board taking into consideration the fact that this is a brand-new, modern facility. And we've worked really, really hard to bring a great, great project to the area. And we desperately need housing. And to reconsider, I guess, that position and maybe meet us halfway with this second on the bottom that Tim had drawn, where we do have offsets to 30 inches that'll break that roof line up. And it'll, it'll make it more aesthetically pleasing. Again, that's still going to cost, you know, $150,000, $180,000 more to do that. But I think that would be a fair compromise, and I hope the board will consider that.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, the planning board can't really consider, although we, you know, we feel your pain, we know that you're spending a lot of money there, but we can't really consider the cost of the effort when we're determining the site plan. And we normally don't, we don't do that. I know it's a lot of money that you're putting forward there for that pitched roof. It, it does make a big improvement there. And though you cannot see Princeton Properties from the road there, from what you're talking about, you definitely can see them. And you can see the museum down there, too. And the majority of the buildings along there do have pitched roofs in that neighborhood. And, you know, we're going by one of our site plan guidelines, which is for the harmony and compatibility of the project compared to the existing buildings in the neighborhood. That's one reason for pitched roof, basically. I think that you know, you're just going to have to really maybe bite the bullet if it's approved with that roof, unless you have another, you know, the last, I don't have it here, but the bottom picture that we're reviewing there is pretty much the same one that you put forward, except for a little bit of, you know, fancying up around the edges there. It really doesn't do much for what I know I was looking for, and I think maybe the rest of the board was looking for.
Right. Well, I certainly appreciate that. I mean, it's, you know, fancying it up around the edges is $180,000. It's certainly not fancying it up around the edges. That's a significant improvement, I think, or we think. And it's also a significant amount of money that's invested. Is there, is there a place in the site plan review process where it specifies pitched roofs? And are the planning board going to require every project that comes down the pike from this day forward with pitched roofs? I mean, you're, I'm being singled out here. I feel like I'm being singled out. I don't feel like I'm being treated fairly. I feel like I'm being treated in a disparate manner. We, we, we've met, we've met all the requirements. And I would like to know, wherein the planning board process, it says that you shall put a pitched roof on because that's what we want. I understand that there's going to be some site plan review process here with regard to the aesthetics of the building. But I think that's more limited to the colors. And the chair last, two weeks ago said, said that, you know, the colors are fine because they're earth tones. But we're talking about personal preference here, and you're asking me to spend an additional $1 million. You, this should not be taken lightly. This is very, it's a very big, big request. And, you know, we went, we did the work, and it was a request, it wasn't mandatory. And we, we've shown it, and we've also given you a quote from one of the top guys that's in this industry who works in the Hampshire Housing, who's an inspector there, third-party verification guy. This, these are real numbers, folks. And, you know, biting the bullet, you're, we're proposing to spend 18 and a half million dollars in town, and now you want us to spend 19 and a half million dollars. You know, and there were comparisons that were made to, you know, geez, you're going to have a flat roof. And my gosh, I mean, what's that going to do to the neighborhood?
Well, again, we're.
Next door, next door, there's turmoil. You've got turmoil next door. I sent photos of turmoil. I sent photos of.
All of them. They have a pitched roof. Yes, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, just if I may, I just, I think it would be helpful for the board. I know I'm, I'm kind of struggling with, you know, I'm looking at the two roof designs that were, that were submitted to this meeting. And I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, maybe, maybe the board members can see it, but I'm trying to understand the difference between the alternative plan on the lower half of the screen and what was originally submitted. So is this proposing to increase the height of the, kind of the, I don't know what's called, the parapet around the exterior of the building? Is that? I guess a question for Jack or for Tim. You know, the 30-inch height increase, is that, it appears like it's, it's raising the parapet height along the perimeter of the building? Is that correct?
Mr. Franks, that was, that was a question to you.
That was a question to me. Tim, do you want to, you want to help with that, Tim?
Yeah, so instead of having that low slope roof on the entire roof line, that's, what we did was took some of the bays and tried to accentuate. What we did was we took the narrower bays and tried to accentuate that verticality of that one piece. Because the gable roof, we knew early on was going to be very expensive. We were trying to come up with at least one alternative that would get away from having one, one eve line essentially, or one soffit around, you know, a building this size. So we took that, that one narrower bay and decided to accentuate the verticality of that, similar to what we did with the, with the gable roof, where we have gables on those smaller, narrower pieces of the building. It's, it was trying to eliminate all the excess material and excess cost that that gable roof structure would, would impose on the project. So it is, it is different than the original design. It's not radically different. It's not a radical departure from what we had. But it's, it's an attempt to address the concern of that low slope roof that had one consistent, continuous soffit around the building.
Thanks, Tim. That's helpful. I was just trying to get some clarification on that and make sure that board members understand that, you know, the three different options we're talking about here. I, I do see Mike Jasmine, who's the town's building official, had his hand raised. I don't know, Mike, if you had any comments kind of specific to this.
Let's just wait a second. Let's, before we go any further with the discussion, I'm just going to call the members of the board to see what the press is leading to. Maybe nobody wants the pitched roof on here. We've been having discussions for no one. So I'm just going to go around myself, myself. I, I like, I'm in favor of the gable roof that they put on top, the drawing on top. Michael York, what would your, what are you leaning for?
On this, on this part of the project, I like the gable roof. But I'm still not in favor of the reduction in the part.
We'll get to that later, but we're talking about the, the roof design, the three ones submitted. The original one, the gabled one, and the increased, I guess, soffit or facade.
I like the gable one.
Okay, Jane, would you like to weigh in?
I prefer the gabled roof, yes.
Okay, Richard Sandsberry.
I think I prefer the gable roof.
Okay, Brandon Self.
I think I prefer the gable roof.
And Sly Karasinski.
I prefer the gable.
And Richard Lane.
The gable roof, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're, board is in a consensus about the design standard or the design that they, they passing to us. Now, Michael Jasmine had his hand raised, so let's find out the code enforcement officer.
My question is to Tim. So with the, with the, the, the lower rendition where you're, you're kind of moving the cornice around to give it a different look, you're still basically talking about rubber membrane that's going to go even with that cornice, right? So you're not creating a parapet, a true parapet where there's going to be, you know, trying to figure for all the rain and all that, right? It's just, it's just, it's more, it's an aesthetic. So basically, it's still a flat roof that's changing elevations. Is that true?
And that would be for Tim, that question for Tim?
That's correct.
Okay. Tim, would you like to go address that?
Yeah, so we are changing the heights of the low slope roof. We're not creating a parapet.
Okay.
I have no desire to put a bowl on top of a building.
No, no, I just, I mean, we're, we're using the word. No, no, I just, I mean, we're using the word.
Around, around here, that's about the worst thing you could do.
No, I would, well, I would agree. And that's why, yeah, when, when, when one uses the word parapet, it can, it can conjure all kinds of interesting things, so.
I don't think I've used that word. So it's, it's a low slope roof. It will flow off the edge.
Right, okay, right. It's just.
How, how, how we get there, whether it's a tapered top quarter of a roof trough.
Sure.
Or whether it's papered insulation, we don't even gotten there yet, but.
Okay, okay. No, I.
It will slow off the edge.
Right, right. I understand. I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting a pool in the top, that's all.
Nope, no swimming upstairs.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Anybody else have their hand raised up? So you can see, any of the members of the public want to have their hand raised up or something discussed before we keep on going? Yeah, I see. Right now, no members of the public. JP Harris, who is legal counsel for the applicant, has his hand raised. All right, let's hear from him. Go ahead, JP.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me participate on, on behalf of Averor. I just had two comments. I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Franks has presented, but the, the survey or the consensus of the board about preference, I, again, on Mr. Jack's, on Mr. Franks' behalf, I, I just request that you adhere to the standard that requires tying this back to some objective finding and reviewing the photos that Mr. Franks submitted with respect to the neighborhood. It shows, as he indicated, not only diversity in this area, but also other flat roofs. The one thing I really wanted to comment on, though, was the, the notion that you don't take cost into consideration. And, and I would just suggest that the test really is whether the conditions imposed are reasonably related to the use and your other considerations for this development. And I submit to you that whether a condition is reasonably related, it has to factor in something like a million dollar cost increase that particularly where we're talking about, at least what I've heard so far, are preferences. I do think it's appropriate for the board to take into account what Mr. Franks has submitted about the additional cost and whether it actually really achieves anything of material difference with respect to the, how this project fits into the neighborhood. So I, I won't repeat anything else that, that Mr. Franks has said, but I wanted to weigh in on that one point. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And if, if I may to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the chair's intention with asking board members about, you know, what their thoughts were on the roof design was to just get an initial understanding. It's not a.
The, no, we didn't take a vote. Obviously, no, the intent was to, to see if, if the board was leaning in the same direction or not, then we could continue with discussion. If not, then the discussion goes a different way. But it looks like we're continuing on the discussion of the pitched or gable roofs up there and as a consensus of the board.
And then I had a question for, for that applicant, just trying to understand the costs associated with these different designs. I, you know, I reviewed the, excuse me, reviewed the, the estimates that were provided for the gable roof design. You know, estimated approximately $944,387 for the gable roof design. Does that represent, is that an incremental additional cost compared to the original roof design? Or is that the cost of the, the entire, you know, entire construction for that roof? And I guess similarly with the, the other alternative presented on the lower half of the screen, you know, the additional, is that an additional cost? Just to, to help the board understand the costs of these three options.
Now, Mr. Franks, would you like to address that? He's asking you whether the, the pitch roof or the roofs that you had presented to us here, are they total cost of the roof above and beyond what the original cost of the roof was, or is the original cost of the roof there first and then this is added on to that?
Thanks for the clarification. This, this additional $944,000 is above and beyond the original. This is going to add $944,000 in additional cost to the roof. So where we are now with the originally planned roof, that, from that, that forward, these two photos that we sent in or two renditions or drawings, one's going to add $944,000 to the overall cost of the development and one's going to add roughly 175, 180,000, 150, 175, 180,000 in the, in the, in the overall cost of development. So it's, it's a, it's a significant increase in cost. Hope that answers the question.
I think it did. Matthew?
Thank you. Yep. And one other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mr. Harris referred to the photos that the applicant provided of, of Route 10. I did want to provide the planning board with some additional photos of Route 10. So I'm going to share my screen here. So this is an aerial map of the Route 10 corridor. I'm showing the, and I, I don't have a perfect copy of this.
I'm just going to come over your shoulder and take a look.
So this is an aerial map. The development site is outlined in red at the, at the corner of Perry Lane, Route 10. So I just wanted to highlight, in addition to the photos that were provided by the applicant, some other properties in this area that were not included in those photos submitted by the applicant. So specifically looking at Cobble Hill Pines condominiums, the Princeton Properties apartments, Evergreen Knoll apartments and Riverbend apartments. So just looking at a few photos from each of those, those developments, which are within this neighborhood and adjacent to the property. So Cobble Hill Pines has some multi-unit condominiums. It also has several single-family homes that are part of that condominium development. So these are two photographs from that development. Princeton Properties, which is across the street from the site. These are images from that development. Showing the design of the building and the roof design. So this is also of Princeton Properties. And then this is also Princeton Properties. And then further south on Route 10, there's the Evergreen Knoll Apartments project, just showing the design of the buildings, roof design again. These buildings have a pitched roof. This is also Evergreen Knoll Apartments. And then the final project is Riverbend Apartments. So this is roughly across the street from Evergreen Knoll, again, on Route 10. Both Riverbend and Evergreen Knoll are within about a half mile of the development site. These, you know, these four projects, residential projects, multi-family residential, do, do have a pitched roof design. So I just want to submit that to the planning board in their consideration, you know, looking at these photos as well as the photos provided by the applicant.
And that would fall in, again, into harmony and compatibility of the project compared to existing site. Which, again, is what we're, we're looking at here, I think, anyway.
Yeah.
So I know we probably discussed that a fair amount there. You know, it's a big cost for the developer, but it's, I think it's within the planning board purview to make sure that that fits in with the surrounding neighborhoods. And it's practically the gateway to Swansea is what other people have called that there. So unless someone has something new on the pitched roof, let's, let's discuss. Do you have something there on the pitched roof?
It's like Jane.
Oh, Jane does, okay. Jane?
Well, I, I just would like to say that in, in regard to Mr. Franks' comment about personal preference, it's, it is a personal preference, yes, but it's not just the personal preference of a member of the board. Being a member of the board, an elected member, we try to represent the people who have elected us. And I have heard from people who are not happy with the looks of the building that was first presented. So I just wanted to say, it's not just a personal preference, it's a preference of the people of Swansea, and that's who we're doing this for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Yes, I agree with you. Right, we're elected to represent the people and they expect us to do our job. And again, that's in the site plan regulations that we go by. The harmony part of it is there. It's there. So if no one has anything else to say about the, the roof other than the cost, and we know about that, let's discuss some other matters about the, the plan, which I think Michael York, to discuss the parking issue. Would you like to say something about that, Mr. York?
Yeah, I just don't believe that we should be, I don't see a compelling reason to reduce the, the parking requirement that the people of Swansea have said is what they wish is their zoning law. So I don't see a compelling reason for it. So I'll totally against the reduction part.
Well, now, we're, we're talking about 21 parking spaces. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So what would would you say there'd be room for a compromise there? About the.
I, I really, I really think unless you can find a compelling reason, we have to go by the zoning regulation that we have. Well, I don't see, and I don't see a compelling reason unless somebody can show me one.
Well, the, you know, we're talking about zoning regulations. We also voted this year, the town voted this year to add into our regulations that the planning board could reduce parking by, I think, 20%, something like that in there, 20%, at their discretion on planning boards. Now, I know that you, you don't want to, you, you think that there isn't going to be room enough for everyone who needs a vehicle there. Is that what your concern is?
That's my basic concern, yes.
Okay. You know, I see that, you know, you can never have too much parking, I would say, in places also. But also, this is going to be a pretty big kid generator. And over in that area where they're, they're applying to eliminate some of those parking stalls there, at least, at least 11 of them anyway, would be a much better spot or a great place for kids to play over in there. And how about eliminating just 11 of the stalls? Or, or not even, you're not even up to that? Michael?
Yeah, I understand, but I don't, I don't see, I don't see kids playing out there. First of all, kids don't play outside that much anymore. And I can see if their families, they're going to be across the street and use the Cutler Playground, because there's more to do over there, unless the developer through his cost is going to put a playground in there, not just open space, which I don't think he wants to spend that much money on putting a regular playground in there for the kids.
Yeah, that's a good point, because of that playground across the street there over by the school and ground field. Yeah, you're probably correct. They probably would be gravitating over there.
Yeah, because over there, they have, they have a baseball field, a softball field, everything to play with, where the guy can go out there with his sons or daughters and, and play ball. Or there's also a, a regular playground that's on the grounds over there.
That's fine for older kids, but what about younger kids? They're not going to be going across Route 10 by themselves unless they're accompanied by an adult, I would assume. No, no, probably not. And, you know, depending on whether the town goes for a crosswalk there or not, that'll probably depend on how many kids are actually here, you know, later on in the future when, when that is, is done to. But, yeah, if they aren't going to put up, you know, a play area, say, Vincent Play Area with the swings and things like that, they have, I think they did down here in town here when they put the play area up there. If they aren't going to do that, then I think Michael York is correct is that they probably won't play over there unless there's something to draw them over there. Right. And is any other member of the planning board want to weigh in on the parking issue here? You know, we, they.
I have a question. How, just how many parking spaces are we now thinking of? Refresh my memory, please. Before, before any reduction, how many, Mr. Franks?
Parking required is 156. We're asking for a parking reduction of 21 to 135. The documentation that I submitted from the State Housing Finance Authority clearly delineates that the need is less than one car per unit. And we're asking for a 13% reduction and the planning board has the option to grant up to 20%. So that said, the overall development has 1.85 parking spots for the entire development per unit. And we're asking for 1.65. That's two tenths of 1% for the reduction. That area will be a less impervious area. There'll be more green space. There will be benches put there. We, I have to discuss with the equity investors, but there is some opportunity to put possibly a basketball court in there or, you know, badminton or volleyball net. So we're attempting to reduce the paving area. And as required by the zoning ordinance, says a planning board during site plan review of new uses or expansion of existing may allow the reduction of up to 20% in a number of required parking spaces provided in area reserved on the approved site plan to accommodate the minimum number required off-street parking spaces should they become necessary in the future. The construction of any unbilled parking spaces shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board. So that's why we showed a C1 and a C1B to let you know that we do have the opportunity, if it were ever needed, to put in additional parking if there was a, if there was a need for it. But the State Housing Agency has clearly delineated that it's nine tenths of one per unit. So realistically, I suspect we're probably going to need somewhere between 75 and 80 parking spots. But with the parking reduction request, we still have nearly 60 spots available for overflow parking for any visitors or anyone else that, you know, might stop by. And the ability to add more at a later date if needed. So I'm just a big believer in building, you know, what you need and having more green space because it's better for the environment. And I just think that the opportunity to utilize that area on both sides for park benches or possibly a gazebo or a place for people to sit and read is going to be a great, a great option for us. And, you know, if we ever did need the additional space, we have that area that we could take back and add additional parking. But as is now, I think we've presented enough of a, plan with regard to the data that's collected by the State Housing Agency from numerous projects all over the state, both urban and rural. And I think this is a, a great idea. I think it just gives more room for people to walk their dogs, sit, relax, read, and it's a less impact on the, on the environment. So I think it's a win all the way around.
Well, I would like to say that I, I do not really favor reducing it any further than the 156. I understand all that you're saying. I'd like to ask if you've considered looking for off-site parking in case you need it, because I think it's going to, you're going to find that there will be cars parking along Perry Lane, and that's not going to be a happy situation. And if you want to save that area, yes, it would be nice to have it green, but what about getting it ready for parking in the beginning? Because how long would it take you to reclaim it if you had left it as a green area and then you find you have to reclaim it? And another thing, you mentioned last meeting about how many cars there are at your place in Walpole. And I believe you said that you went over and counted and there were 41 cars? And there are how many units? 42 or 43?
43. So it's under, it's under one. Yeah, it's close to one, but it's, it's under one per unit. Correct. 43. So it's under, it's under one. Yeah, it's close to one, but it's, it's under one per unit. Correct?
Yeah, and that's 95% of the P, of the units have a car parked. Okay, have a car to park. 95%. If you have 156 parking spaces here, that would be 95% of the units if you have 84 units.
Well, Jane, excuse me, Mr. Franks. Jane, that 156 number is what we require them through our site plan regulations to have on this site.
Oh, well, I think, I think we should have that.
And then, and they fit it in there and they can have, they've shown that they can fit it in there. It's tight, I'll say, but they can fit them all in there.
Well, that, the, everything on this is, is tight.
Yes.
Sadly enough, it's, it's really tight.
But it meets their criteria. You know, it's tight, but it meets all the, it meets all the
In a rural area, it looks really tight.
Right. So by, by that math, Ms. Johnson, 95% of 84 would be about 80, not 156. It would be about 80 parking spots. And that is in line with the State Housing Agency and its experience over several hundred facilities across the state of New Hampshire. So you, you, talking about people parking on Perry Lane shouldn't even enter into this equation. That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a hypothetical situation. And the town could easily put up no parking signs. We could easily address that in the lease that there is no parking along Perry Lane. So tho- those are things that could be very easily addressed, but what we're telling you is that affordable workforce housing developments require less than one parking spot per unit. This isn't my data. This is the state agency's data. This isn't stuff that I drew, I drew up. This is after they went and looked at hundreds of facilities across the state. And the average is 0.9 per unit across the state. What we're asking is for a 13% reduction which equates to 1.65 spaces per unit, which is 90% more than what the State Housing Agency is telling us that we need. We're, we're giving, we're giving 90% more of what they're telling us their experiences for the last 40 years.
Yeah, we've got that, Mr. Franks. You know, I know, we keep on repeating, going around, around in a circle here. Yeah, we've got your numbers and we've got the numbers that the planning board due to the site plan regulations require. And also we've got the reduction numbers in our, our zoning that we voted in. We're just trying to work up some kind of a, a game plan here to, to either allow it or not allow it or allow some of it or something like that. We know your reasoning and we know your numbers. We have no reason to dispute them. We're just trying to work through this here. And how about some of the other planning board members want to chime in on that? On the, on the parking. Richard, you have any, anything to say on the parking? No, nothing? Do you have any preference whether you, you know, they, they get their 21 parking space reduction? Or keep it to the 156 or?
I think it's fine.
You think it's fine, which, to reduce it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, what do you think?
I could see a reduction.
Brandon, what do you think?
Yeah, I could also see a reduction.
And Michael, what do you think?
No reduction.
Okay, and Jane?
I wouldn't reduce the parking spaces. Don't forget to ask Dick Lane. He's
I'm getting to him.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have something else to say on that?
No.
Okay, and, and Lane? What's that?
Damn it, shut up.
I'm going to throw a wrench into, into the thing a little bit here. In order to gain the reduction in parking to gain green space, what is the difference in the ROI of 84 units versus 60 units?
Say that again. Are you, are you asking what the difference is in parking for, for that, the reduction in units? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm, what I'm getting at is we're debating whether or not we want to reduce the number of parking spaces in order to gain play area and green space. And my, as I say, wrench here is what would be the problem with reducing it from 84 units to 60 units? You, as long as there's not a major hit on the ROI, you gain all the green space you need. You gain for recreation or whatever and you maintain your one point, whatever, parking space per unit.
Okay, so you're asking that the applicant reduce his units to 60 some odd units or and therefore reduce the need for parking. That's what you're saying, I think.
Yes, and you gather, you're gaining the space that we're debating about also.
And that definitely is a possibility. We can ask the applicant about that, you know. He probably is not looking to reduce the size of his units there. Mr. Franks, just, would you like to weigh in for a second on that?
Yeah, at 60 units, it makes the project unfeasible. It's, it's, we're on the, we're not going to be able to do the project with the height with the addition of the roof either. So you're putting us in a position to to not be able to do the project based on these extraneous requirements that are going to be cost prohibitive in both, in both areas. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss that, not Mr. Lane, but I'm going to just state this for the record. And I realize it's in a different zone, but on two and a half acres, you gave 80 units of Asher. And they got the parking in over there. 80 units on two and a half acres. We have four acres here and we have enough parking for, you know, 156. It's tight. It is tight. And we'd rather just reduce it because we've given you documentation and data that supports that. And I, for the life of me, I, I can't understand why people wouldn't want more area for children to play in and, and more green space. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that because we have an opportunity here to make this greener. And I just, for the life of me, the data that we've presented, I just can't understand why we're harping on a 156. We've given you documentation from a state agency that says, you know, we don't need it and you have an opportunity to do that.
We're still working through it, Mr. Mr. Franks. The reason you got the 156 is because it's our site plan regulations. And the reason for a reduction is because that's also in our zoning regulations. We can do that. And that's what we're working through right now. And I'll just direct this at, and Michael York and Jane Johnson, you know, it, it says in our zoning regulations, the ones we just voted in there, that they have to show where that excess parking to bring it up to the 156 would be. They've shown on the plans. It's right there. And the planning board can also revisit it. In fact, they could probably make it into a condition that it's revisited in one to two years to see if there's a problem with parking down there and the planning board could have them just put in the rest of that parking down there if it's a problem. You know, they say it's not going to be a problem. You say it may be a problem. But we have a, you know, a fail safe in there that says if it is a problem, then they have to put in the rest of the parking spaces. So what if we did that as a condition? Michael or Jane?
Yeah, I would just note too that in the staff report, that is a recommended condition. The board was supportive of a parking reduction to require the property owner to come back to the board 12 months after a certificate of occupancy is issued to provide a report on the parking situation. That would give the board a chance to evaluate how the parking is. And if there's a need for more parking at that point, but to Scott's point, if in the future there was a need for parking, we, we would address that certainly at that time.
And it's there, yeah. And right, we could, you know, as a, as a condition as to one year after CO is administered or granted or or after, we'll say 80% capacity, something like that. See how the parking is. Anyways, Jane and Michael, what are you saying?
If, if that condition is held to, and that would be all right.
Michael?
Yeah, if we figure out a mechanism to do that. Yep. Because there's other projects in town, not, in particular, that conditions are not met and we don't follow up and, and take care of. That, that's my issue. We never, we never do follow up to take care of things like this.
Well, we've, we've been better at that lately. I think since Matthew has been on board with us and code enforcement has been a little bit better on that type of things. But anyways, yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering, so. Mr. Jack Franks with his hand raised. Mr. Franks?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you. Matthew, thank you for bringing that up. And I can tell you that we will absolutely comply with that. And I will have the, well, as part of the management agency's responsibilities, they have to log in to the applications and they have to monitor the vehicles that are there. The, the tenants have to disclose their vehicles. They have to be registered. They have to be insured. They have to provide that information to the management company. So we have that data and will have that data on a rolling, consistent basis. And we would be more than happy to share that data with you in six months, in a year, 18 months, two years. It, it will have that data. It's, it's part of their required, required work. And I'd be more than happy to share that with you at, at a moment's notice. So if you wanted to make that a stipulation that we provided that on an annual basis, I would be more than happy to comply with that. And I, and I thank you for bringing that up because we certainly will.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franks. There's a member of the public that has a question.
All right, yeah, Debbie Gove has her hand raised. So I'm just go, I'm just going to allow you to speak here. So when you're ready, you'll just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm Debbie Gove, Perry Lane in Swansea, and I appreciate all the discussion you're doing on the parking versus the green space and all. And I am an advocate for green space. I, it caught my attention when Mr. Frank said he's a firm believer in green space. Looking at this, it does not appear to be that that's the, the mentality that the company is coming at this from. Because as Mr. Lane requested, what would it be to reduce to 60 units? And I can certainly understand the financial impact. And I am not familiar with the Asher property that keeps being referenced, so I will need to look into that. But the fact that you're going to have families here and much of the green space is along Route 12 means it's really unusual, unusable green space. A chunk of it is a holding pool for runoff. And then, so this piece of parking would give some green space that may be more family, child appropriate. And I do think checking in in a year to make sure that the parking situation is okay is reasonable, but I, I think what some of this comes down to is wondering actually, are things that are promised going to actually happen? And I did hear you address that. There's been some issues with the town following up on that. So I hope that that is being addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one, one other member of the public with their hand raised. So Beta Crew, when you're ready, just please unmute yourself.
Now, I think my, this is Robert Wellington, 73, Unit 6. I think my question has more or less been answered with the, the idea of revisiting the amount of parking, although I would specify that it would be necessary, as I think someone else has already pointed out, for the applicant to indicate where the additional parking would be put if it were found to be necessary. My original question had been, you know, Mr. Franks has repeatedly quoted a report from New Hampshire Housing about locations, both urban and rural, showing less than one car per unit. I'm wondering if he has any statistics from the state on how many of those units that were looked at are in rural areas without public transportation? I would be interested in whether or not he's got, whether or not the state has any statistics on parking for that kind of area, because it seems to me that if this is workforce housing, at least once the shutdowns with the pandemic are going away, people who are working will need to get to work. And they're going to need a vehicle. And these days, most couples, both people are working. I'm just wondering if there are any further stats on just exactly where these units that the state studied are.
Thank you. So if I can quickly, I just wanted to respond to the, the question about about where the additional parking would be constructed, just because I am controlling the presentation here. So on the screen in front of you is the parking reduction plan. So this is showing the site with those 21 stalls not constructed. So I'll just draw in here the location of where those stalls will go. So they'd be located here on the western end of the site. And then I'll, I'll pause and I'll scroll up on the screen. So this site plan is showing those additional stalls constructed in this area and in this area. So that just gives you a sense of where those additional stalls could be built. If needed.
Good. Everybody is clear on that. You can see where those stalls would be put. They're definitely shown on the plan and it's shown that they would fit in there. And that would bring them up to what's required under our zoning regulations or site plan review regulations. Mr. Franks, did you have any comment on that last comment?
Yeah, I sure do. Thank you, Mr. Wellington, for, for bringing that up. In the email that I sent to Matthew Bockler this, this past week, I spoke about three letters, RSC, which stands for Resident Services Coordinator. So this development, like all workforce housing developments, will have someone who helps with a variety of different services that's provided by the management company, and this will be no exception. One of those is, is ride shares and, and working to help tenants who do not have a vehicle to drive to get them to and from doctor's appointments, to and from the gym or workout facilities. And, and so there will be somebody there who will be able to help with that. From a percentage basis, the report shows, and I don't know if you can slide down a little bit, Matthew, to the, to the report, if, if you have that available. About 50% of the folks were in an urban area. And then it goes from village to suburban to rural. And rural would, in this case, kind of be defined as, you know, out in woods, places without any real sense of services at all. And then when you get into villages, you take a look at Westmoreland, the downtown village area or the Walpole area. Or you take a look at, you know, the, the, the smaller towns and villages around the region like Swansea Center, for example. And those, in many cases, do have, you know, some, some water and sewer that are available. But from a density aspect end of it, you know, they're, they're not urban. So that's the other 50%. So what they did was they took a look at these developments across the state of New Hampshire. And, yep, thank you, Matthew, for finding that. I do appreciate that. I think it's a little, a couple more down. And here, here, right here, acknowledgements. These are the organizations, management organizations, that are also owners of these development projects across Southwest Community Services, even locally here, who is a provider of these rides, rides and ride share programs that would be accessed for this. But you can see that there's a wide group of developers and property managers in the region who I'm, I'm certain that Southwest Community Services and is Keene Housing in there? I don't see Keene Housing, but Southwest Community Services, who has several workforce and senior housings in a region, they were part of this plan. So their statistics in the immediate region in Swansea, in and Keene, would have been taken into consideration for this. And they would have been in that, you know, suburban, village, rural area. I think rural is, is, is really way out where we, you know, we don't have a lot of the service, the, forgive me here, water and sewer services that you would have in like a village or a suburban area. And then if you go down a little bit further, Matthew, the next one, please. You can see here, might be the next one, maybe one more, because that's the executive summary. Here we go. And just a tad further, and we can take a look at the numbers here with regard to city or urban and age restricted, or total, you know, you get forty, thirty-four percent. And then the balance of that, suburban, rural, and if you could just think of Swansea Village, or, you know, the village in the downtown of, say, Westmoreland, the further down the list you go is more rural. So we got, we got a pretty, pretty good, pretty good set of numbers there. We got roughly fifty percent from the general occupancy versus age restricted, a little higher for the, for the age restricted. But you know, there are mechanisms in place to help folks that don't have, that don't have rides for their ducks. A lot of the folks that are going to live here are going to be retired. I think in Walpole at forty-three, which is roughly half the size, we have probably fifty-five to sixty percent that would be considered not seniors, but certainly over, you know, forty-five, you know, fifty years of age. The vast majority of folks that live there, more than fifty percent are, are older. And some of those folks don't have cars. But we, we work with them to get them rides for doctor's appointments and, you know, meals on wheels and all kinds of different things that, that they're there to support and help. And that's part of the resident services coordination aspect. And so I appreciate you bringing that up, gave me a chance to chat a little bit more about some of the great things that we'll have here at this facility. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public with their hands up about that?
Nancy, Nancy Mastel, did you, I know you had your hand raised previously.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the parking. And mine is more of a personal experience. I'm, I understand statistics, but quite frankly, I think you can make statistics say anything you want. So from a practical side of things, I have friends over at Princeton Apartments. And that's fully, it's fully residential, it's fully booked, however you want to say it. And it is difficult to find parking over there if I go over to visit. And I do think that if there's no parking within the facility, they'll either be on Perry Lane or potentially in Gamarlo is one of the two. So I'm, I'm very concerned. I like the idea of a green space, but you are, you've got two huge, very large buildings, and I don't think you have enough parking space. This is an area where people drive. It's, that's, that's what's true. I believe that more than I believe the statistics that they won't have a car. So that was just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. About the reduction in parking. I can keep the public hearing open, but I think I'd entertain a motion that we either grant them the reduction that they're looking for, or we do not grant them the reduction that they're looking for and, and move it along. So that's what I'm asking for, a motion, one way or the other.
I think, I think, yeah, you have your hand raised.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. No motion on the floor. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. You know, just to answer Nancy's question about the parking, you know, Princeton, across the street, is a market rate development. And the folks that have the ability to afford a market rate development would tend to have, you know, more vehicles. The reason why workforce housing and affordable housing is in place is for folks who can't afford to live in a market rate unit. So therefore, first is the housing and food. And it goes down the list. And finally, you get to the vehicle aspect end of it. So Nancy, to let you know that this is workforce housing, it's designed for folks who don't have a lot of money. So those numbers from, you know, standpoint from the State Housing Agency are from a state, a state agency that, you know, has been involved with this for forty years or more. And that's accumulation of information that they've gathered and done with projects right here, development projects right here in Swansea. So I'm, you know, happy to comply with any mandate to come back to the board in six months or a year, or however often we could review it. If that's part of the, part of the piece here. So, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to add that in, I'd certainly be in support of it because we'll have that data readily available for you folks. And I can just set it on my calendar and talk with the management company and send over that data on a regular, consistent basis every year for you, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, any, any reduction in parking would come with that condition on the site plan. And I think the board would make sure of that, that it would be reviewed either in a year or capacity issue, one or the other, whatever the board decided. But thank you for your input.
So can I quickly just go forward? If, if you're going to take a vote on the parking reduction, just want to make clear to the board, you know, I would recommend if you want to put that type of condition on, that they come back in a year to meet with the board and provide an update, that that be a condition kind of on a final approval.
Side plan, yeah, definitely. So not, not on the vote. No, we're, we're just voting on whether they, we grant them that reduction. Thank you and thank you for clarifying that. That's, everybody get that? Okay.
I'll move that motion to reduce.
Okay. A motion by Sli to reduce the parking capacity by twenty-one parking places, bringing it down to one hundred and thirty-five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And if there are any further discussion?
Who was the second, please?
The second was Brandon.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I meant to mention that. Any further discussion? Michael, Jane, want to weigh in anything on that?
Well, I, I'd like to, to know that he has looked for off-site parking for visitors or something. I think, I think that's something that should be considered.
Well, for right now, we've just got the motion on the floor to allow them the reduction that they're looking for. And as far as off-site parking goes, they don't really need to look at it because we could hold them to the hundred and fifty-six. And that's what we require for them to have. Allowing them possibly to reduce it by twenty-one and we'll revisit it in a year or whatever it happens to be. And as I say, the proof is in the pudding. If, if it isn't working over there, then they're going to have to put that exit parking in. Any other discussion?
Just one little observation. If in a year's time, we decide, okay, we need to put that, those twenty-one sites back in, where are the kids going?
Well, where would they go if we had them do it right at the very beginning?
That's kind of what I'm saying. That's why I brought up the reduction of this to sixty units to, in order to create the whole thing.
Well, and, you know, if the applicant wanted to voluntarily reduce their project by that size, I'm sure the board would be fine with that. It's not something the board is going to ask them to do, I don't think.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Okay, yeah, I would just note too, just from response to, to Richard's comment. You know, if, if the property owner is required to come back and build those unconstructed parking stalls, that is, you know, it's an amended site plan. So it's something that would come to the planning board. And I think that would be appropriate for the planning board to ask, you know, at that time, if we're doing away with this traveling area, are you making accommodations elsewhere on the site?
So, good point. Yeah, it would be. Thank you, Matthew. Yeah, good point. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, so I will do a roll call. Vote on the motion to reduce the parking capacity from one fifty-six to one hundred and thirty-five. Scott Self is a yes. Michael York?
No.
Jane Johnson?
No.
Richard Sainsbury?
Yes.
Brandon Self?
Yes.
Sly Karansky?
Yes.
Richard Lane?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. So we've allowed them to reduce their parking spaces by twenty-one. So we've gotten by that hurdle. So now let's go. And again, the public hearing is still open. That's right. And let's have another motion on whether we're accepting, which roof line we're accepting to move forward with this whole thing. They present.
Make a motion to the slanted roof.
They presented an original and they presented two alternatives, one being a low slope roof, which is the one with the raised facade, I'd have to call it. And the other one is the gabled roof. That is the one with the multiple pitches on top of it.
So if, if I may, just before, thank you, just before any motion is, is made, you know, I would recommend the planning board, as part of their evaluation of, of the roof design, I'd recommend the planning board, for the record, talk about your, your preferred roof design in terms of the site plan review regulations that Scott had cited. And so I get that in front of me. Fairly being here. Moving. Moving through all these packets here.
And it falls under the category on site plan review under architectural plans. And it's the number, it calls for harmony and compatibility of project, the project compared to existing site and neighborhood. That, that is the one that, that provision in the site plan. Because we asked them to present architectural plans at a minimum and indicating the following, a floor plan. We asked them for building elevations, all four sides. We asked them for the style of windows and doors to be installed on the building. And we consider the type of building material to be used on the exterior of the building, including color renderings. And we also consider the details and other plans. Should they believe it is in best interest of the community to review the project. And the evaluation of the following appearance factors will govern the planning board's decision on whether the proposed building designs are acceptable. One, building materials and color considerations. Two, harmony and compatibility of project compared to the existing site and neighborhood, which is the one, in my opinion anyways, we're looking at when we're talking about the roof design. Three, lighting design, only lighting visible from the exterior of the building and retention, alteration or removal of the existing structures in site pictures. So could you put that up on the screen?
Yeah, so it's up on the screen. So it is the section eight paragraph L of the Town Site Plan Review Regulations. So these are regulations that are adopted by the planning board and amended as needed. But they're, they're part of the town regulatory requirements for commercial and multifamily residential development. And so Scott, you know, Scott cited the specific, you know, specific section there in terms of harmony and compatibility of project compared to existing site and neighborhood. The applicant has provided some photographs for ten. I've showed some examples of other properties along Route Ten. You know, I would cite two. I didn't include photos of these developments in my presentation. But the newly constructed full throttle commercial building by Bayfield Road has a pitched roof. Cheshire Horse Building on Bayfield Road and the Mark Farm Road has a pitched roof. Gamarlo Supermarket adjacent to the site has a pitched roof. I didn't show photos of both, but those are just some other examples of commercial properties on Route Ten with pitched roofs.
And the rest of the multifamilies have pitch roof too. Riverbend has pitch, pitch roof and the other one down the end. Evergreen, yeah, they have a picture of their multifamily housing and Princeton Properties, of course.
Yeah, and I think here at the planning board, you know, it talks about, the site number review regulations talk about, about the neighborhood. So the planning board has any comments about this specific neighborhood, the village of West Swansea?
About, well, that's all part of the whole discussion, really, about the, the West Swansea or Route Ten really being a gateway. We've mentioned that before in other planning board meetings in the past about that being a gateway to, to Swansea. And what, that's what you see when you come right downtown there, you see all those, those things. We need to keep it as pleasurable as possible to the eye, anyway, and, and fitting in with the New England character of the town.
And it looks like a hand raised from a member of the public. So you want to take that now?
Yeah, I will take that now.
So I believe it's, it's Robert Wellington again. Go ahead, Mr. Wellington.
Actually, it really is me, Vita Crew. I,
You're tired of me?
No, you, you've heard from my husband. I live at seventy-three Perry Lane, and so I'm in the Cobble Hill Pines community behind this, the building site. And as I've looked around the neighborhood and had that sense of community, we, I really love that sense of we're living in a beautiful rural place. And yes, indeed, there is, you know, there's kind of an ugly factory building on the corner. But since this is a residence where people are going to call home and we want to keep that sense of community going, I was really, really impressed with how, what would the difference it makes looking at that gabled roof? It, it just, it's funny because what was a appeared to be like cell blocks. And, you know, there are some parts of the world where, you know, that was the inexpensive way to do housing and, and, and people have lived like that. And I always felt that it didn't feel like somebody's home. I think that this, this workforce group deserved to have a, a, an aesthetic that makes them feel really part of this community. And I've looked across the street at Princeton Properties, and they not only have the slant on the roof, they've got shutters, they've got a kind of siding, they've got trim that kind of gives it that New England feel. And so it would be kind of nice, I mean, I, it's, it's not even just kind of nice. It's, it's that, to me, it's what we want Swansea to be like. So I'm, I, I just would like to encourage you to, to consider that, that, that despite the rather exorbitant cost of putting it in, it, it really seems to tip the balance to make this look like it belongs in rural New Hampshire.
Thank you. I agree. The architect did a very good job on presenting that to us. It really changed the appearance dramatically, in my opinion. Has Sly left the meeting?
Just, just for the, just for the record, Sly, Sly had to step out. He is, he is still on the meeting via Zoom. But he has left Wickham Hall.
Okay. Well, then we're back to our which, which roof design. We need to make a motion and, and decide which roof design that we're going to accept that they presented to us for this meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the gable roof.
Okay, Michael York has made a motion to accept the gable roof as the roof that the planning board wishes to see on this multifamily housing.
Second?
It's the pitch, the, one like that. And it was, excuse me, and it was second by Richard Lane. I'm just writing this down. Okay, so the motion is that if this is passed and accepted and, and approved by the board, it will have the gable roof that they presented to us. And I will go by roll, roll call vote again. Scott? And I will go by roll call vote again. Scott Self is a yes. Michael York?
Yes.
Jane Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Sainsbury?
Yes.
Brandon Self?
Yes.
Is Sly on Zoom? Sly Karansky, is he on yet? Not yet.
Sly, if you can, well, maybe, maybe go to-
I'll go to Richard Lane.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we'll wait for a minute for Sly to come on to this.
Yeah, Sly, if you're, if you're on Zoom, are you able to hear us?
He's on, I'll need to repeat the motion. He probably didn't-
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I had the star six, I couldn't just unmute. Anyway, yes.
The motion, you know the motion. The motion was to accept the gable roof as the roof of choice for this project.
Yes, I agree with that.
Your vote is a yes, okay. The motion is passed. Thank you. The motion is passed, so that move on along with the project, the line is a gable roof. Now, that brings us up to any other questions we had on this. You know, we talked about parking, we talked about the roof. We've talked about most everything on the last meeting, and we ironed all that type of stuff out. We talked about fire protection. They came back with some changes to align up the 18 stalls and the 20 stalls, particularly with one another. Let's see, we talked about landscaping, I think, the last meeting. And I think that was pretty well done. Jane, did you have something else to add on landscaping? On what you were talking about at last, last meeting?
Well, I truly would like to see more plants in the landscaping along, especially along Route 10. I don't, I don't think the landscaping plan was thorough at all. Maybe it is thorough, but it doesn't show much. I would, I would think that there could be some kind of shrubs put in between those trees. Some, you know, a lower level to make it more protected and give it a better, a softer look.
And, and yeah, it probably would too. It probably wouldn't look nicer that way. But I just need to point out that what they were required to do for our site plan review regulations, they have, I think there are a few extra trees actually that they're putting in there that they weren't required to do, but they are putting in what they need to do. And yeah, if they wanted to put some extra bushes or shrubs or something in there, would be fine, would be good, but we can't really make them do any more than that is in our site plan.
I'm not trying to make them do anything. I just think that it should be, it should be done in a way that's pleasing to our neighborhoods, our town, and pastors by. It should be a good representation of, of our town. So that's all. That's why I had brought that up, and I had talked last time about a berm, and I had pictures, I didn't send them, but I had pictures of a berm on a very flat piece of land, and it's amazing. When you put a berm and plant some evergreens on it, it's, it's an amazing change, but that's all I had to say about that. Actually, I am more concerned about the fact that these people who are going to live here have no place to put their things that they can't put in a closet, like bicycles, children's toys, and all, all that sort of extra. So is it going to be lying out in the parking lots, leaning against the buildings? What, what can they do with it? And don't tell me they can rent storage, because that is expensive.
Yeah, they, you know, we're deciding on the plan they presented to us here. They could have put in storage, I suppose, any number of things, but again, it boils down to what they're required to do and what they presented to us. And they presented pretty much everything that they were required to present to us. And I think, yeah, storage, carports, and all kinds of things are great to have, but it doesn't really necessarily mean that they can do-
For the sake of the town, I think there should be something provided for them to store their equipment in. And then the other thing I'm still concerned about is the waste disposal unit. I am dead sure that one 12-foot dumpster is not enough for 84 units.
Well, they said at the last meeting that they could put in another dumpster there, and they would have it, I think, emptied twice a week. And again, that's a health issue. If it is a problem, it's already going off with the- We have, we have code enforcement, and we have a health officer, still, I think. We have a health officer that can address that problem, and they can, they can make them do something about that.
Well, you asked me, and that's something I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I'm glad you wanted to know.
And the biggest concern is the water concern, and I should, I would like to see an, a formal study, and I hope that we will see from the water company, a formal presentation that they really can service this place. Because I know in the past, there have been incidents when water for everybody else goes down, when it's overused someplace like for a fire or an automobile accident or things like that. So, and I know that some of the hydrants in our town, I think, are not totally adequate and efficient either. So that, that's a really important thing.
Well, yes, as far as the water goes there, the buildings across the street, the former Haley Heights or Princeton Buildings now, they're, you know, about this size, something like that. There are three of those buildings there. Each building uses 3,000 gallons a day. So we would, you know, basically you could figure that each one of these buildings would use, say, 3,000 gallons a day. They're about the same people, that number of people that are in there. So that's what that boils down to. So 3,000 gallons a day is not very much water. You can run your sump pump, that you pump your cellar out, if you have one in your cellar, I don't know, but you can run the sump pump for, let's see now, I think about, probably about three hours, and you pump around 3,000 gallons. I think they pump about 1,000 gallons an hour. So three hours, and you'd be pumping the amount of water that these buildings are using an entire day. The water company already has said that they have the water capacity, which I agree with, I'm familiar with those systems over there, to serve these buildings. They just won't serve them for pressure-wise, for fire protection. Again, and yeah, that's a problem, but they presented it with their assistance in the cellar.
Just to note to the planning board, so they're, one of the staff recommendations for a condition of approval is that the applicant provides verification from the water company that they can service the building prior to issuing a building permit. So that is something we would verify before the project.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. Thank you, Jane.
Two, I have two members of the public.
Let's, let's hear from them.
Okay, so I'm not sure who raised their hand first. I'm going to go with Nancy Moss Teller. If you want to provide your comments, please go ahead. Nancy, did you have?
There, can you hear me now? Sorry. Okay, sorry. I'm at 67 Perry Lane. And I wanted to ask, what has happened about having a fence installed along the tree line in the back? We have, the area that we live in is, that particular tree line is all pines. As you know, the lower limbs fall off, that gives a sightline between the two places. I provided pictures of that. And you can see right straight through. The issue and the worry that I have is with the parking light shining right in on our development, it really would be very helpful if we had a fence back there that, that stopped that light leakage, and it would also help with noise, particularly if there's a park area back there now. If it becomes a teenage hangout, just a fence would be a very nice way to protect both, both areas. We're, Perry Lane and our condos, we, we have a lot of wildlife in our area. I've had a bear go through my yard just last year, moose, deer, turkeys, all kinds of things like that. And the more lights and activity we have, the less wildlife we have. So I'd like to see a fence along that back line, and I, it seems to have lost, been lost somewhere in there.
Hasn't. It hasn't. The most recent drawings show a six-foot fence along that back line. The drawing that has the full capacity for parking, and then there's another drawing that has the reduced capacity for parking, and they both show a six-foot high fence according to the, yeah, yeah, six-foot high stockade fence along that back line there.
Okay, good. All right, so that is a definite then?
If that's on the site plan, it's got to go in.
Okay, very good. The other question I had, when Mr. Franks responded to my question, he mentioned that this is workforce and it's lower income. Back when we were doing the zoning planning meetings, we asked pretty, a lot of questions about whether or not this was low income. Low income, while I know it's necessary, it does tend to bring in more problems with drugs and that type of thing. So I, I'm at a loss at how, how we can suddenly go from a marketable type of building to something that's now low income or workforce. I guess, I guess I need to know what the difference is between workforce and low income, because that is not what the zoning board planned, signed off on, at least in my opinion. So I'm really struggling with, with the, they're very thin margins they seem to have on, on putting this whole thing together. It, if they are not attractive buildings, again, that's my opinion. So, anyway, big, big question is, what is the difference between workforce and low income? And how did we get to this point?
Well, they, it's a matter of semantics, I think. You know, those two terms I've heard are interchangeable, workforce and housing and low-income housing.
Then my, then my concern, it was misrepresented to the zoning board. Because we asked if specifically if it was low income. It has a very different picture and impact if it's low income versus a marketable product, or a marketable, you know, like the Princeton properties. Very different people live there. And it, the problem that I have is it wasn't presented properly right from the very beginning.
Well, let's find out. Matthew, have you had something to say on this?
Well, I'm wondering if the applicant, Jack, I don't know, if you want to just talk about workforce housing, the, you know, the state's definition or the financing that you're applying for, if you're in New Hampshire housing.
Sure. It was always, it's always been presented as a workforce housing or affordable housing project. The low-income aspect end of this is through the tax credit process. So there are low-income housing tax credits through the public and private partnership that build this development, but it's actually private money that's coming to the table to build this facility. So I will utilize the tax credit option available to raise the equity necessary through private partnership with equity investors. They're called syndicators, and they bring the money to the table. In this case, I partner with a company called Hunt Companies. And so it's a funding mechanism for workforce and affordable housing. And as discussed with the zoning board, and I'm not, I don't, I don't recall if you were there or not, Nancy, but this was all discussed in great length. And these, these units are designed for people that live in our community or want to live in this community that, you know, makes somewhere between 12 and, say, $25 per hour. So they're, they have to have stable incomes, stable, viable incomes, retired folks. But the whole low-income housing tax credit aspect end of it is simply a funding mechanism for the partnership of the private and public partnership. So I hope that explains it out to you in a, in a, in a way that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense. I just don't feel that it was represented that way at the zoning, zoning meetings. We'll have to have some discussions ourselves with our, within our own network here about if that's an issue for us. Because I did not walk away from this feeling it was low income. We would not have wanted, have wanted that. Are you applying for low-income status?
I think what you're, I think what you're confusing it with, and I may be wrong here, but I think that you're thinking Section 8 housing, and that's not what this is. This is not Section 8 housing. This is workforce housing. So there's, there are differences between Section 8 housing and workforce and market rate housing. So this was all, all discussed at the zoning board level. And I don't have much more to add about, to it than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think Mr. Franks has answered that pretty much. Again, it's a, it's a financing tool, by the looks of it, is what they're using to, to get tax credits in order to get private money invested in this. Is there someone else with their hand up?
Yeah, it looks like Vita Crew has her hand raised again, so Vita, if you have additional comments, please go ahead.
She's muted.
All right, I'm not sure why it was still up there. The hand stayed up, sorry. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with their hand up there, any of the member of the public?
And so at this point, so just as a reminder to members of the public who are participating in the meeting, this is, it's a public hearing, we're still in the public hearing. If you have any comments, questions, please click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen. At this point, it looks like, let's see, Nancy, did you have one follow-up question?
Sorry. And that was, there are other, two other infrastructures that I was curious about, both electric and our data or Wi-Fi. And are there any issues with supplying electric, electricity? And, and the power grid, and these are going to be, they'll demand a fair amount of usage, at least in the summer, since they're fairly boxy. Will it affect, with, with additional users, will that affect our capability of Wi-Fi and that type of thing?
Probably not. You know, that, again, that's not really a planning board or a site plan review issue there. As far as electrical power is concerned, the only issue with electrical power has to do with their fire protection system. And that is that they need to get the, the power that runs along Route 10 to be a reliable power source, so they do not have to have a backup generator, which I would imagine they will get deemed as a reliable power source. Other than that, the, the power draw from this complex here, air conditioning and all in the summertime will not be a whole heck of a lot compared to an industry or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
It's not a site plan issue, but to answer your question, that's-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, how about members of the board? Any comment?
I wanted to ask one other thing I remembered. Last meeting, someone was talking about the water runoff and effect on the aquifer, and that perhaps the water disposal or runoff was handled differently at the Gamarlo store. I don't know about that, but I do remember someone saying soil in the water dissipates, but salt doesn't go away. And I think it was either Mr. Franks or one of his associates when they were talking about the runoff pattern and, and the snow, the snow storage. And so that concerned me. If the salt doesn't dissipate, and it's all, you said, the water is going back into the ground, then I need further explanation on that. I don't understand. Sorry.
Well, last meeting, it was Barbara Scully that brought that up, amongst other things. And what she meant about the- And what she meant about the Gamarlo's parking lot as opposed to this parking lot here, this drainage system here has uh, I believe it's perforated pipe between catch basins. And it's laid out, you know, a catch basin, water goes into the catch basin, goes through a pipe leading down to another catch basin. And I think, and we'll have him weigh in on this, that they have perforated pipe in there. So that means that the water on its way to the next catch basin has uh the ability to just drain into the the ground, be filtered by the ground as it moves through. And while Barbara's point was that she didn't think Gamarlo's parking lot had any of that and that the runoff they had from their snow just sheeted across the ground and soaked into the ground that way. Now, Mr. Frank, do you care to weigh in on any of that and drainage system there? Am I right about it?
Sure, thank you.
I can speak. This is Thomas Duffield um in relationship to that. I mean, Gamarlo's is sheet flowing off of there and it discharges into the ground. That's just indicative of this well-drained soil we have here. Um, we're gonna have impervious surfaces that roof drainage can go directly into the ground. And we're gonna have catch basins and piping that will take advantage of this well-drained material to have sumps in the catch basins that will be maintained. The ability to drain while traveling in the piping because of this well-drained material, almost like in viroseptic systems that are used for septic systems, that type of piping. And then in addition to that, um, we have the surge basin and infiltration and detention basin to hold back those peak flows when we get those storms of three to six inches in twenty four hours. Um, so I think this is kind of an innovative use of new technologies to try and get um, the water back in the ground and uh where it belongs. Um, and I think we've done a good job of keeping it all on here so that we're not increasing the flow offsite. Even with this development, and that's one of these uniqueness with this well-drained property here.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
I I see that Barbara's station falls here, so I want to give Barbara a chance to um, because her name was mentioned.
Yeah. She'd like to comment on it.
Were there were there other questions or comments towards that?
I'm just, I'm not yet. Yeah, I'm trying to see Barbara. Looks like, um. And try this again. Um, Barbara, I don't know if you're able to unmute yourself.
Yes, for some reason I'm having a lot of trouble connecting. I keep getting kicked out. So I lost part of the discussion. Um, but I just want to say that not only is there perforated pipe between the catch basin, but I think the word dry well was used for the catch basins, which means that instead of, you know, a sealed unit before it gets to the sump in the catch basin, you also have a a pervious uh surface. So not only is the water going from I mean, infiltrating along the pipes, it's also infiltrating right at the catch basin. So it's it's totally allowing infiltration. And Jane, about the salt, the salt doesn't absorb to the the um sand. It just stays with the water and goes into the water. So, you know, mostly what you want to do is like when you have a leach field and you have the soil, um, the the leach, you know, percolates through the soil and things stay in the soil and the water gets cleaned as it goes it back into the water table. Salt doesn't do that. Salt just stays with the water and so it will just continue to go down. And what I haven't seen on here is exactly where is the water table on this? We do know that it's greater than six feet. And there was mentioned that there was one location where it was twelve feet. But how many test pits have been done? And is that, you know, just do we have any sense of where the water table is and how long it would take for that to leach down into the water table?
Thank you.
Uh, Tom, would you like to?
Yeah, yeah, we 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 have former work, we have monitoring wells that me and a hydrogeologist uh who's familiar with the project here have worked on. The water table's at twelve feet. We have then the ability to use the soil attenuation. Um, soil, uh, getting back to your comment about the salt, salt, when it's absorbed in the water and it becomes um, part of the water solution, it does move with the water. However, there still is soil attenuation um of silt particles, even salt at times that works in these. We're taking advantage of the whole site to take care of our stormwater treatment instead of just the traditional way of sending it to a detention basin and an infiltration basin. Um, having a water table at twelve feet, we can do this. If the water table was at three or four feet, this would not be an option. Um, just like septic systems, you can use trenches in old dry well systems, they work very well. There's some of the longest uh uses of those with well-drained soils like this. So I think we've done our homework here. This site is very good for this. It's a natural use of this type of uh soil and natural environment to take care of the stormwater.
Thank you, Tom. I may point out also that there are plenty of people that add salt to their water to remedy the hardness of it. You know, in their in their systems, so it's not always. All right, uh, anything else from the board members or the public? Because I think, you know, we've discussed quite a bit here. And I think we've gotten a lot resolved. And I'm getting ready to close a public hearing. And when I do close a public hearing, there'll be no more comment from the public. With the board will just deliberate and come up with a motion to either approve or or not approve, and they will take a vote on it. So if anyone else has anything to add or discuss, now is the time to do it before I close the public hearing. We'll just give a minute for anybody to raise their hand or something like that.
Right now, at this point, I don't have anyone with their hands raised.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
More so, uh, go ahead, Nancy.
So can you hear me now? Sorry.
We we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm so sorry. Um, I would just like to thank everybody for um very carefully um looking at this um as an abutting neighbor. Um, we very much would like to um see our why our our neighborhood maintained. And we are, of course, concerned about it because it's a lot of a lot of coming and going, a lot of coming and going on a road that that um is not used to a lot of traffic. Um, and I I would guess at this point that um it's I just would like us to maintain the rural character of Swansea that's on on the on our banner, on our 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 page, on our webpage. Um, it's why I live where I live. Um, I'm concerned that these are very, very large buildings um in a very small space. Um, I know we need housing, but this seems to be too much for the area that it's in. And I'd I'd love to see it reduced. I know it then makes it economically not as feasible. Um, but I I I just would like to see the the rural character of our town maintained. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I have um just one comment. Um, just Scott, that salt can be an issue for someone with a cardiac diet who are in salt restricted diets, so that can't be a health issue. But my other question, and and I might have missed this earlier in the meeting, again, for connection issues. What happened with the alteration of terrain? Was that settled? Is there um, is that going to be a condition for the uh for the permit?
It will be. The state's gonna weigh in on that. And maybe they already have, I don't know, but the state's gonna weigh in on that, whether they need to file the alteration of terrain.
Yeah, I I can weigh in on that and Tom can as well. We're below a hundred thousand square feet of disturbed area and Tom, you can go ahead and
Yeah, I think we can show that in the alteration on terrain is not required here. And we can, we'll provide that documentation to the town. And later, if that's not sufficient, then we can submit that to DES for their concurrence with that.
We've got uh, we've got under a hundred thousand square feet of impervious area. We've got seventy seven thousand square feet from the calculations that the survey has given us. So when you extrapolate out four acres at forty three thousand uh forty three thousand five hundred sixty square feet, we're just under it. I've already had conversation with the ES about it. So they said, well, uh, give us a call back and let us know where we end up with impervious versus pervious. And um, uh, we'll go from there. So uh, it it's our opinion, or at least uh my opinion, and Tom, if you agree at this point, we're we we're not going to be required to have an alteration of terrain permit. So uh, if if in fact, uh, that does change and we we need one, then I suppose, you know, we we could uh absolutely apply for that. But at this juncture, we're under a hundred thousand square feet.
And we're maintaining all of our stormwater on site. And you notice there is no wetlands, there are no stream courses on this property. And we're under five acres. These are some of the other conditions that go along with projects that uh do not require alteration of terrain.
But the alteration terrain is not a hundred thousand. It's my understanding. It's just if you are altering a hundred thousand square feet, not if it's a hundred thousand impervious.
With with exceptions to that, if you're under five acres, if you maintain all your drainage on site and there's no wetlands and stream courses on site.
So it's it's less, it's uh less than, I mean, a hundred thousand, you're saying you don't need it?
That's correct. Correct.
Yeah, typically, just so uh for the board and members of the public, um, typically what we do in these cases, um, you know, it's often that a development requires local land use approvals and may require state approvals as well. Um, so in this case, you know, we are a recommended condition that if the alteration terrain permit is required, that that be provided. Um, approved permit we have provided to the town before uh we issue a building permit. Um, you know, we would just ask the applicant to provide correspondence from DES um verifying that it's not required, uh, if that is the case, but um, that's something we could work on at a staff level.
Yep, and that that would, yeah, be one of the conditions for referrals, that that would be fine. So if if there's nobody else wishing to present anything new, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And hearing, nobody with their hands raised up, I'm closing the public hearing. That means no public is uh allowed plain, I mean, the applicant or otherwise to enter into our discussions. The board is going to deliberate this and find out what we come up. So now we're discussing it, the board. So we've gone through the whole thing, as I say, all kinds of stuff on it. If they, you know, they've uh been accommodating as far as giving us what we've asked for and we wanted them to do several things. They did them. Uh, they presented us with the options of roof for one thing and and other things. Um, we have uh, I'm just gonna read down the list of recommended conditions from the staff conditions and let's just talk about those. That would be prior to any motion being made to uh approve. And one of the conditions, of course, the applicant obtained a building permit and received final approval code enforcement, that would be on there. The applicant shall obtain town driveway permit from Perry Lane. That kind of has to be there. Proposed super cool construction, again, gotta be there. Verification from the West Swansea Water Company that the company has adequate capacity and is able to service the proposed development shall be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit. I think that one probably should be on there. Anyone else?
I agree.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna, as I read these down, um, anyone who disagrees with one being on there, just shout it out so we know that we have a disagreement. Otherwise, I'll just keep on going down here. So you don't need proof for everyone. Number five, uh, if required, a copy of the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit shall be provided before the issuance of a building permit. Number six, final design of public sidewalk and bus stop on Perry Lane shall be approved by the public sidewalk. I mean, by the uh Director of Public Works, the applicant shall be responsible for the construction of the public sidewalk and the installation of the bus stop in conformance with Department of Public Works requirements. The sidewalk and bus stop improvement shall be completed before issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Uh, number seven, all exterior light fixtures shall be full cutoff design so as not to cause glare on abutting properties or the adjacent roadway. Again, another standard that we usually hold them all to. The existing trees located on the western edge of the subject property shall be maintained for screening purposes. So those trees would be the trees uh owned by um not be there on these people's property, right?
Yeah, just to clarify, so um there's a, you know, a large standard tree is. Um, and you know, my understanding is a few of them are on this property, but the majority of them are on the adjacent public pine's property. So um, this is really just related to the trees on the on their applicants' property. We can't we can't require that the trees on the adjacent property be maintained.
So um, and they're gonna have a six foot fence there anyway, so um I don't know, I think we ought to just scrap that number eight one because there aren't that many trees, I don't think, on their property there. And they aren't doing anything with that piece there, you know, they've got the easement for the sewers that are going through there. And if some of those trees do fall on their line. I said, well, we can leave it in that they don't take those out because that's important to the people over on the the that live in the adjacent. So we'll put, let's see, the existing trees located on the western edge of the subject property that are on the subject property. Let's put that in there. That are on the subject property. Shall be maintained for screening purposes. That will fix that.
Yes.
Number nine, landscaping must be maintained in good condition and replaced as necessary. And that's a good one, I think. Good. Number 10, a post instruction review and verification by a licensed professional of site grading and stormwater retention on being in compliance with the approved plan shall be provided prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. I think that one should be in there because there's been a lot of discussion about the drainage on the site, even though it's flat, you know, and they've got it all figured out there. I think just someone else looking at it. I don't know, anybody else? I guess everybody else. Okay.
I agree, yeah.
Number 11, a note shall be added on the approved site plan that any excess amount of snow shall be removed from site. And the applicants themselves said that they were gonna do that if it came a problem, so we'll leave that on there. Number 12, if future access is provided to the adjacent property at Max seventy two uh lot ninety eight one, that'd be Gamarlo's parking lot. An amended site plan will be required to be reviewed and approved by the planning board and Swansea Fire Department. The future access shall be located in a minimum of one twenty five feet from Route ten right of way line and shall have a minimum width of twenty four feet, which they've shown in their drawings. Future access shall be needed to grant access and perpetuity. Perpetuity, yes. Uh, now that um, that's if they should gain that right of way, because they don't have that right of way yet through there.
That's that's right. So that's only if that were to be granted, just to make sure that um, the right to to use that access is.
And they usually learn perpetuity anyways when they get a right of way through there, right? It it goes on the deed and it's it's done for the so if they do get that, it wouldn't be that. So we'll leave that in there, I guess. And we did re- re- approve the reduced parking plan. So uh, we'll go with number thirteen, see, the approved site plan shall show the twenty one parking stalls on the western side of the site as future parking. Yep. Uh, the developer and and or property owner shall provide the planning board with a report and update on the parking lot usage for the site twelve months after the CEO is issued. See, we want to adjust that one. It's a year after this, give it a certificate of occupancy.
Or occupancy rate.
Yeah, occupancy rate, like like if it were eighty percent occupied, something like that. Um, you know, I think that would be something that would tell us.
Yeah, because a year after.
It might not. It might not. So let's, let's say then, that 80% occupancy rate, or two years afterwards. If they haven't gotten up there by two years by 80%, we still want them to give us a report on it, I think, would be fair.
Sure.
Okay. And number 15, the construction of any unbuilt parking spaces shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board as a modification of the approved site plan. And that is true, they'd have to come back. And those would be all the conditions. If we were to approve the site plan, which I think we probably should, because I think it meets everything else that is required on our zoning regulations. So if anybody agrees, then on your motion to.
Sorry, just quickly, Jack, I just wanna see if you have any questions about the conditions? Questions or concerns?
Sorry, Matthew, I couldn't hear you.
Oh no, sorry, I'll repeat, just wanted to check if you had any questions or concerns about the conditions?
No, I think they're all, I think they're all fair. I think they're all with the best interest of the folks in Swansea and the folks that are gonna live at this development. I, I think they're fair, I think they're reasonable, and, and I can give you my word that we'll abide by them and we'll do the best job we can possibly do for the citizens of Swansea and for you folks on, on the planning board. It's been a very detailed and thorough process. And we'll work really hard to do everything that we said we're going to do. And we will do everything that we said we're gonna do. And I think the, I think the, the requirements are, are fair.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. Okay, so.
Excuse me, Dick Lane speaking, should the roof line be entered into that?
I would say no, because we already had a motion that was passed that we decided on which roof line that they had presented to us. Do you remember, right? Let's see. We did, a motion was made by Mike, and it was seconded by Richard, and all in favor that we, they were gonna go with the gable roof.
Correct, but should that be part of this list before we approve?
Of the conditions? You can make it part of the conditions if you want, it's already, we already voted, but. You know, if you wanna make a motion to approve the project and make that as one of the conditions, go right ahead.
Shouldn't that be included in the recommended conditions?
Yeah, so just, I, just, so the, the conditions we just went through were the conditions in the staff report that were recommended. So, you know, if a board member wanted to make a motion to approve with the staff recommended conditions that we just went through, you could, there are additional conditions. You know, I would, I would recommend, even though the board voted on the gable roof requirement and voted on the, the reduced parking, that that be in your, your final condition of approval.
All right, yeah, we can do that. Anybody wanna make a motion then? That, Richard, you wanna make a motion to approve it with those two other conditions, meaning the reduction in parking and the gable roof?
We'll make a motion that those two items be included.
Okay, your motion is just include those two items, is your motion to approve the project?
Yes.
Your motion to approve the project, Richard, add those to the conditions.
Motion to add those to the conditions, and then we can do the final approval.
Okay, we'll add those two into as conditions. So we still need a motion to either approve or not approve the project. Who wants to step up with that one? Well, I'm running the meeting, but I, I can make the motion, and, you know, we've.
Speak again, please, I'm not clear.
Oh, make, we're waiting for a motion to either approve or not approve the project. So no one wants to make the motion, but I think we owe it to the applicant.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Scott?
That slide.
That's the slide, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the project with the staff recommendations and conditions, including the recommend, the condition of the gable end roof design and the reduction in parking.
Okay, thank you, Sly, yeah, Sly makes the motion to approve the project with the addition of the roof line being a gable that they had presented, and the reduction in parking, along with the 15 other requiring, recommending, recommended conditions with the staff. So that means 17, so that's the motion you second, and Richard seconds the motion. And that wasn't Richard Lane, that was Richard Sainsbury, sorry, for the record, anyway. All right, so now I'll go down the roll call vote, Scott Self is a yes, Michael York?
Yes.
Jane Johnson?
No, I, I have a lot of problems that I, I just have not resolved with this. And I, I'm not convinced the water is going to be adequate. That we do not have a professional engineer's report at this time that the water is adequate. And I, I don't think it's healthy that we only have one dumpster proposed. The traffic is a, a real concern. And I just think that it's, the project is overkill for the site and for our town at this time.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
Yep.
Richard Sainsbury?
Yes.
Brandon Self? Yes. Sly Karunzinski?
Yes.
Richard Lane?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes. So I guess, Mr. Franks, you're gonna be busy.
A lot of work to do, Mr. Chairman. And as I said earlier, we'll work real hard at bringing a building to the community that everyone can be proud of. So thank you for the opportunity to present, and thank you for the opportunity to work with the town and building a very nice facility for the region.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, our next on the agenda is the discussion phase of the meeting, and we have a code enforcement discussion, and what is that about?
All right, let's see, let's see. Let's see, Mike Jazn, are you still with us? I'm waking him up. So I'll, I'll provide some, some background, give everyone a chance to stretch and take a quick breather, but. So, so Mike and I wanted to come visit with the planning board this evening. You know, a few weeks ago, a couple months ago, there was some discussion about this kind of code enforcement procedures in town. So we wanted to meet with the planning board, kinda let you know what our, what our approach and procedure is for handling concerns with properties and the community. There was also a question about what our neighboring kind of, how they handle code enforcement issues, just to kinda compare what we do with what they do. So that's, that's the reason why I'm here this evening. Just quickly, you know, our process, we're, we're complaint driven. You know, we have a small staff at Town Hall, we don't, we actually have the capacity to have staff members patrolling the community and looking for code violations. So we do rely on residents to let us know if there are any issues that we need to look into. And I guess I'll let Mike, Mike talk a little bit about this process for, you know, once we, once we do get a complaint, how our steps are responding to that.
I appreciate everybody sticking, sticking on it, you know, it's been, it's been a long night already, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I, I fully recognize that there's been, you know, some members of the planning board that they themselves have made complaints, that they don't feel have been answered, certainly to their satisfaction. And unfortunately, there's, there's other members in town that probably feel the same way. What, what we do get, get complaints, the first thing we do is, of course, write it all down and take care of it. It, it, try to document who complained and the rest of it. And we'll say, in the seven years I've been in Town, Town Hall, I have had exactly one citizen who's put his actual name on an actual complaint form, and has been, been willing and able to let their neighbor know that they were the complainant. A lot of what I do is, is, isn't totally dissimilar to what police do. If you wanna complain to the police, you can call them and complain. But a lot of times, you need to file a physical complaint, or they're not gonna follow up, because it's hard to enforce if you don't actually have a true complainant. So we do, we, we do go to the property, that's the first thing we'll do, and/or look at the property files, so we read the property file, I try to understand the history. Most of the complaints that have been brought to me, oh, many of the complaints have been brought to me, I don't know the percentage, are longstanding complaints, stuff, stuff way before, way before me, and way before two or three people, probably before me. Most of the complaints that are brand new, I'm pretty happy with in the, in the time that I've been here and done, done my level best to try to figure this all out. We don't have a lot of new problem properties, they're mostly all old problem properties. And I've worked really hard to keep the, the new ones, ones down. So that's basically the, the, the situation. You'll, you'll reach out to the offending person, you'll let them know that, you know, he can't do this for this reason or that reason. And you try to work with them and try to convince them to, to change their ways. To go beyond that is unfortunately very, very difficult. And what my, what our neighbors in Winchester have found, and other municipalities have found, and Swansea itself has found, is that if they won't comply, the next stick really unfortunately is court, there's not a lot in between. There's do it, please don't do it, you're not supposed to do it, you know you're not supposed to do it, why are you doing this in court? And that's part of the, the problem and the dilemma. Because it takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of money to bring someone to court. And even then, you may not get compliance. The town of Swansea has also found this out. So, you know, we're, we're, we're in the middle of, of several of them now. I don't know what the spreadsheet looks like right now, I could pull it up. But probably some 30 different properties in some state of, of, of having been complained against. And, you know, what, what we're gonna do with them. Some of them are, some of them have multiple angles. For instance, right now, it's tax dealing time. So we're working with some of the properties that are in danger of being taxed heated by the town. I'm trying to explain that the addition of the condition of the property is going to be a problem if they're looking to make a deal with the town on the tax burden. And I look at your property, and you still need $60,000 worth of work on it. Well, it's gonna be hard to believe that you're gonna be able to pay your tax bill and fix your property. So, you know, this time of year, or this, in this time in history, we're in a position where we've got a, an all-time high demand for real estate and for land. And I've worked with a lot of people, and working with a lot of people, trying to get them to consider that maybe it's time to sell their land. And when they do, we have the opportunity to get a new, new buyer and to clean the property up and make it a better place, which has happened in town. And that's been great, it's been great when that happens. We have got a lot of, of, of citizens, more than you would guess, that are hoarders. Hoarding is a recognized mental illness, it makes it a lot harder to deal with, especially if there's no children in the house. So, I mean, I could go on all night, and this is just about the complaints, it's not the other stuff, the 150-plus permits that we put out a year, and, and, and the myriad of other things that we all do in Town Hall. Most of you who, I know Scott and Jane in particular, spend a lot of time in Town Hall. And it's probably not at all unusual for, when you come to Town Hall, for Matthew and/or I to be engaged with someone about something, because we run a very open, I think, very welcoming Town Hall. And I, and I very much appreciate that citizens feel comfortable just walking in and asking us questions on any part of any day. Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane, I know, has come in and asked us a couple of questions on a couple of different occasions. And I think we always do our level best to make everyone feel that they're being heard and that we're doing our best to, you know, resolve whatever situation, you know, that they're going through at the moment.
Thanks, Mike. I just wanted to let the board know too, because there was a, you know, a question that I think Glenn had a couple months ago, just about what the town of Winchester has done. So I contacted Winchester, they provided me with a copy of their, their junkyard ordinance. My understanding of it, and Mike is definitely more knowledgeable about this than me, is, you know, I think Winchester has kind of codified state laws into their local ordinance. So I think everything the town of Winchester has in terms of regulations on junkyards, and what is what, what is not, and what is permitted, is kind of taken from state law, but put into a town ordinance, and that gives them the ability to levy fines too. So the, you know, the next, next slide here on the screen is, this is kind of the, the form they use if someone's in violation of that ordinance. And you'll see for fines, for, for a second notice, $275 a day, and for a third notice, and onward, it's $550 a day. So these are fines that they can levy against a property owner if they're not complying. I know they also have the ability to, if someone's not paying that, to wean it, to put it on their taxes. So it's a different, different approach. I mean, I think we, here in Swansea, I mean, we're kind of responding to the same issues that Winchester is. So we're, we're, you know, complying with the same laws, we just, we don't have a system of, of fining, fining property owners if they're not complying. You know, I'll say too, that I know from talking to Winchester, a lot of these cases, they've had to take to court, similar to us. So I think the big difference is that ability, ability to fine people out of compliance. I mean, as Mike was saying too earlier, you know, the goal, the ultimate goal is always to get compliance. So, and there are lots of different ways to handle that, and every property owner is, every issue's a little bit different. And we have to be aware of that, or else you can run into issues.
All right.
I think the, the, when, we gotta be careful about when we say the ability to fine, because it's the ability to cite and, and, and attempt to fine. I have never seen a case, nor have I, I mean, I've never heard, seen, or considered a case where anybody ever paid $275 a day for anything, alone, $550 a day. I think, I think, I think even writing fines that large are, are brought with problems, because I think when dealing with the, the, the typical individual who has a lot of stuff, that they seem to have value, and that they find personal value. Yeah, I think that's the hardest part that I think really needs to be considered here. There are people that just got a lot of junk and stuff like that, and they buy it and they sell it and whatever else. But the vast majority of them, their stuff is more than just stuff, and it's not junk to them. And I think it's, it, when you hit somebody with $550, $550 a day, you might as well made that ticket for a million. Because they don't have $550, I can almost tell you that now. I talked to a gentleman today who has 400 bales of tin cans. He's referred to them as his retirement. He considers that this, this is his plan. He's collected them, he's crushed them, he's bound them, and he's waiting for the aluminum market to pick up. That's tough to deal with. Fortunately, it's inside a structure, so we don't have to deal with it. From a visual and nobody, nobody will actually know where these are. But that's, that's the kind of, of, and I, and I, and I, and I say this without. Any, any prejudice or anything like that, that's, that's, that's the, the thought process, that's the mentality of an individual, that's what he's decided, he's gonna, that's how, he's gonna pay for retirement.
Yeah, that's a new one.
I wish it were.
Uh, I does want to say, Mike, you know, we've had a lot of code enforcement officers in this town and uh. Your approach by far with the public, I think, is best out of all of the ones that I've seen. And I think you're more effective because of that. And I just wanted to point that out.
I, I genuinely appreciate that, Scott, if, if, I have great respect for you and the time you've been in this town and what you've invested here, it means a lot coming from you, thank you so much.
Just one other comment, you said you were gonna keep it short.
Both, both of our calls. So, unless, unless there are any other comments or questions, I mean, Mike and I are always available if you have a question for us, you know, let us.
Well, just, just to point out again on, on the planning board's position on all of this stuff, the planning board is not enforcement at all in any way. The planning board has no authority to enforce anything, any of our regulations, any of these things that were passed, anything like that, we can't enforce it. That's to the selectman or the representative, which happens to be the code enforcement officer. But we can talk about it and all that business there, but we can't call somebody on the phone and say, hey, you know, we approved this thing on site plan and you're in violation, we can't do that. Anyways.
Yeah, that's one reason why I wanted to, you know, just, yeah, I meant to check in with you, because. That's part of our job, enforcing what you guys approved, so.
It is, yeah.
No, we're not, we don't get it right a hundred percent of the time, we're trying, so. I know, uh, I know I, I had another discussion item, um, there's no commercial zoning districts, um, I'll. Put it out there, our next meeting, June tenth, we only have one multi-tenant application, just considering the hour.
Okay, wanna, uh, forego that, postpone it, and I table it, or till the next meeting, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it's nothing, I think we'd have a better discussion if we're all a little quick, more clear-headed, so.
Okay, that brings us to other business, I think Debbie's been waiting the whole meeting for the other business portion to come in.
I just wanted to, because I should have done it a long time ago.
Yes, sorry, before you start, maybe, do you want to sit there, just to make sure we can pick it up on the.
Yeah, come on up.
Beverly's taking a minute.
Yeah, I, I need her to be closer so I can hear what she has to say.
Okay.
Alright, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, alright, I just would like to make a, a suggestion to the planning board. Um, to maybe discuss and evaluate the idea of impact fees, um, it just seems like. With all the businesses that are coming to you, I mean, apartments and what all. That it might be a good idea to look into those impact fees so that. We can take care of the impact on fire and police and schools, because it sounds like we're gonna have some pretty significant. Impact on all of that and. It's almost like the horse is out of the barn already, but um, I think. It's something that maybe we need to look into, I know when I was on the select board myself. Um, we formed the CIP committee, the capital improvements committee, because. That was one step that we had to do to make sure that we could eventually put impact fees in. And I know there was some resistance at the time, because they said, well, you're anti. Business, anti-growing, you know, our town, but I, I just think it's a tool that is there. To protect us somewhat. And so that's my suggestion, I just would like you guys to think about it, please.
How do you make sure that that impact fee goes to what it's supposed to impact, you know? How does that work?
And, and I don't know that, that's why I'm saying, if you can look into that sort of thing. And, and find out how it's implemented, local government is where you would get your information, because. Um, I actually went to a few classes that suggested this, you know, you're, I'm sure Keen has this, you know, I'm sure.
Keen has everything that we all want, actually.
No, no, and granted, I understand that, but we've got a lot of, of. Things that are looking to come to our town that are going to impact us.
And if we could make sure.
If we're paying, if it's costing us all money to let these things come in, you know, we can think about that.
Yep, but if it can, can be earmarked for a certain thing and we can make sure that it goes to that, say, schools or whatever the heck it is. That's one thing, that's fine, but I'm not so sure that you can actually legally, under state law, do that. You know, make specifically that it goes just to that and it goes in that account and stays there, so that'd have to be looked into, I think, before.
And I guess that's, I just want to. Food for thought, maybe.
Yeah, that's definitely good to think about.
I feel like we need to keep our rural character and it's slipping away.
Progress, yeah.
Couple of comments, um, Jane, did you have a comment?
Yes, yes. I, I agree with um, what Deb is, is. But, is projecting here. As far as how you determine where it goes, it's like any other fund that you put in, you would have to write. That all up and put it in our, put it in our books, just like we just went through some things tonight. And said, well, that, you know, it, our, what we have written for planning board is XPQ and so that's what we have to do. And it, it'd be the same way with, with putting in impact fees, I don't think it's such an impossibility and I agree with Deb that it's something that we need to think about, because. I don't think it's any feather in our cap to be known as the easiest town in the community to deal with. When I, because I've heard somebody say that, oh, Swansea's easy, well, yes, Swansea may be easy, but let's not get too easy here. Or we'll lose what we have.
Yep, good point, Jane.
It's just another tool.
Right.
Box.
Mike, Jasmine, did you?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the, the Supreme Court's kind of, was addressed this a couple of different times, but most recently, the city of Atlanta. National Home Builders Association took Atlanta to court, and what the Association of Home Builders' argument was, was that they were getting, you know, double taxation, that they're, that the. The building department was getting too much money. And the Supreme Court basically said that they were right, that the, the building department should only be pulling in as much money as it costs to run the building department with some variations, of course. And I worked in a lot of towns, uh, as a builder with impact fees and, and Jane is right, they just basically set up. Special accounts and the rest of, for those specific purposes. And the reason they do that is because if you're going to charge them as part of the building permit, you have to do it that way, because if you don't do it that way. Then you will be in, in, in breach of that double taxation standard, so thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I think it's, Debbie, I appreciate, I think it's something we can, we can look into and it's, you know, I'm, I'm very familiar with impact fees, I'm not sure the. The process for putting them in place and kind of who's, who should be taking up the, the, you know, the charge on that, if it's planning board or if it's like.
Nor am I, but I just wanted to say that at a public meeting that goes in the minutes. And get people thinking about it, because it's just, you know, we have to do something.
Well, thanks for taking your time and thanks for waiting all this time in order to get your, your opinion.
Well, and, and the more I sat here, the more I thought, yeah, we really need this. Just saying, no, thank you. Alright, now.
Good night. Well, is there anything anybody else has for the meeting this evening to discuss, or anything we missed?
I have one last, one last thing, I'll, I'll, I'll make this short, so, um, the West LA Beer Company under ten. They're looking to do some live music events this summer, they did some last summer too. Mostly on Saturday afternoons, some Friday evening shows too. They're expecting thirty to eighty people kind of coming through, uh, the course of one of these events, they're usually two to three hours in length. And they are also looking to have a, a food truck parked in front of their building using one of the parking stalls. So, I wanted to update the board on this, kind of, I'm not sure where this would fall, I guess they have a approved multi-tenant application and as you know, they've come back a couple of times for that outdoor seating area.
I think it'd be a modification of the site plan, don't you? I think it would, and they'd have to come in with a modification for. What they plan to do and how often they plan to do it, just so the neighbors and stuff can have a chance to chime in on it.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to check with you guys before letting them know.
Well, that's alright, I know with the rest of the board, thanks, that's what I think. And hearing no negatives about it, I guess that's what we'll probably have them do.
I don't think that it would really impact any neighbors though, because I, I actually went down there and I saw one of the bands playing down there and their stage faces Route ten. So it doesn't really face, uh, any of the neighbors directly.
We still need to give them a, a chance to voice their opinion on it, and if there are butters especially, you know, just something's going on, a chance to say, yes, we're in favor of it or no, we're not in favor of it. Have them in for a site plan.
I'll get back in touch with them.
Okay.
We'll see them soon.
Yeah.
And that was the last item on our agenda, then, I guess?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I was gonna refer adjournment by Richard, second by Brandon, all those in favor, roll call vote, I gotta go down roll call. Scott Self, yes, Michael York?
Yes.
Jane Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Sainsbury?
Yes.
Brandon Self?
Yes.
Sly Karunzinski?
Yes.
Richard Lane?
Yes.
And that's it, we're adjourned, thanks everybody and uh, we'll see you next meeting.
Okay, good night.
Good night.